Okay, the recording's going.
Thank you. Good evening. Today is January 24th, 2022. This is the work session that we have every, every two weeks before, or every two or three weeks before our regular Borough Council meetings. Just to discuss as a group, if there's anything anybody's working on, that there's anything they want to work on, this gives us the ability to discuss things without an OPMA violation. Sally, if you'd go ahead and call the roll.
Sorry, Mayor Driver?
Here.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Johnston? I don't see him here. Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. So Sally, I have a question for you. You, you gave me the new OPMA statement, as well as the ratepayer assistance during COVID-19 statement as part of the work or work, uh, jet, work session agenda. Is that when I'm supposed to be reading this?
I think you read it when you call the meeting to order.
That's what I thought.
Right.
The regular meeting.
You can read it again for the regular agenda.
Oh, we can do that. We can do that. That's fine. Couple things, just a couple of statements to read. This meeting is being called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. This meeting, January 24th, 2022, was included in a list of meetings noticed sent to the Hunterdon County Democrat and the Courier-News on January 5th, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file at the Office of the Borough Clerk. Also, we've been asked to alert a lot of folks. This is coming from the DCA, so you'll be hearing we read this twice tonight. And I think everybody received it in water bills, or it's going out in water bills right now, if you haven't received it yet. Certain measures are currently in place providing relief to ratepayers experiencing economic hardship during the COVID-19 pandemic. For more information, please go to our website at www.historicflamington.com, or contact Rebecca Newman at rnewman@historicflamington.com, or you can call the Borough Hall at 908-782-8840. The New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, DCA, is currently developing a low-income household water assistance program. And this program is designed to assist water and sewer customers facing economic hardship due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For further information, will be provided in this forum and others, as well as online and social media, once that program goes live. Thank you. So the only thing I have tonight for the work session, guys, is expanding the COVID testing. So as some of you know, when we first set it up, we wanted to kind of get a feel as to how it was going to work in our, with our limited space. It's working great. Not a whole lot of people showed up. I think we saw a big rush around the holidays. Everybody was rushing to get tested. Everybody was getting diagnosed positive in some instances. And, um, Malik, how nice to see you with your camera on. Thank you. And, and so there was a big rush. However, it's there. It's not costing the borough anything, and we want to expand it. And, uh, the OEM coordinator and I, and I think he may have reached out to Kim as well, to expand it to business, uh, borough businesses and their employees at this point. So what I'd like to do, if you guys are good with that, um, during the regular council meeting, I'll ask somebody to make a motion to amend the agenda. We will, uh, if you vote yes, we'll add that on, expanding, modifying the resolution, and then expanding it to include borough businesses and their employees, uh, so that they can go to the testing site. Also, just so you know, if you're a borough resident, you don't have to make the appointment. You can actually just pull up as well, or walk up, whatever works best for you. So if you can do that, and Sally, if we do that, it's just a matter of taking the previous resolution and just expanding who, who's the eligibility for. So, no big deal. And that's all I have. I don't know if anyone else has anything else that they want to talk about that they're working on.
Um, I'm still struggling to get people for environmental. Uh, try to keep posting online. Um, I don't know, same, but maybe making up flyers and put them around some of the local businesses. Seeing if that would help. I, I, I know we've talked about a volunteer fair. Um, I don't know, maybe once things are safer and warmer, we can talk more seriously about that, but I wonder if that would be a good idea, but not right now. But that's, that's all I have.
Jess, how many people do you need?
Um, I have one. So probably four or five, I think. I, I have to look at the actual ordinance, but.
Okay.
Yes, what ti- uh, what type of a time commitment is that for people who might be interested?
It's, um, so it's a meeting, uh, once a month, and then, um, it'd be helping out with different sustainable jersey actions items. So it depends on what. Yes, I don't, it's not a huge time commitment. It depends on how much time you want to put into it.
Okay, now I'll ask around my neighbors and stuff, so.
Oh, that'd be awesome. Thank you, Liz.
Yeah, I keep sharing your posts, but I'll see if I can't actually call some people to see if we can't get them motivated to join for you.
That's a good idea. Yeah, I'll try to do that with my neighbors as well. Thank you, Kim.
What day of the week do you guys meet?
That's the third Monday of every month.
Third Monday.
At, at seven and right now on Zoom.
Okay. At seven. And they have to live in the borough, right? This can't be.
Yeah.
This is, okay.
Yeah, for the green team, if, if we had a green team, they could be outside of the borough, but for the environmental commission, it does need to be in the borough.
In the borough.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Do what I can for you, Jess.
I appreciate it.
Anyone else have anything? If not, we can go ahead and, and adjourn until 7:30. Excellent. Thank you. Uh, good evening. Good evening, and Sally, I'm going to do one more thing. We had a request if we would stream to YouTube. Might save me some time. At the end, so I am going to go ahead and get that going now. Normally, what I do is I upload these after the meeting, sometimes before I go to sleep, sometimes not. Okay, there it is. So hopefully that'll work. I guess we'll find out afterwards. Good evening. Today is January 24th, 2022. This is the mayor and common council borough of Flemington. There it is. So hopefully that'll work. I guess we'll find out afterwards. Okay, that's just gonna be a problem. Bear with me. Okay, I don't need, um, being, uh, to the public. I'm so sorry if you're watching. I need to figure out how to take that audio off. And then go from there. So otherwise, I'm not going to be able to hear anyone.
None of us could. We all heard, uh, we all heard, not the echo, but the delay.
Okay, I'm going to give it a shot and see what happens. If not, I may have to end it. Again, starting over again, today is January 24th, 2022. This meeting is being held online only during the COVID-19 emergency. This meeting is being held in conformance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and it was called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. This meeting of January 24th was included in a list of meetings sent out to the Hunterdon County Democratic Courier-News on January 5th, 2022, posted on the bulletin board at Borough Hall on that date, and has remained continuously posted as required. In addition, a copy of this notice is and has been available to the public and is on file in the Office of the Borough Clerk. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, as you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Sally, if you would call the roll. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible. Okay, I have to cut that off. Sorry, I didn't know how to get around that issue with the dual audio, and I'll figure it out this week and have you up online next week. Sorry. Sorry to the person who asked me to do that. Sally, go ahead and call the roll, please.
Mayor Driver?
Here.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yeah.
Ms. Hand?
Here.
Mr. Johnston?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Rosetti?
Here.
Ms. Tilly?
Here.
All right, we're all here.
Excellent. Good evening, and we do not have an OEM report this evening. Yeah, this evening, we do have George Vallone, the potential redeveloper for Liberty Village. He's going to be giving to council the same presentation he's done twice over the past two weeks with FCP's monitored events. This is not a public hearing. This is in advance to writing, uh, voting on, council voting on the resolution to designate Mr. Vallone as the conditional redeveloper for this property. Again, he's going to be given this presentation. It's for the benefit of council before they vote. This will not be a public hearing. You will not have the opportunity to go back and forth with Mr. Vallone or council members during that presentation. However, there are two public comment sessions. The first one, as always, is at the beginning of the council meeting, after council members report. And there's another one afterwards. So you'll have, um, three minutes at that point to make your case regarding what's going to occur this evening as well. The COVID testing started up last Wednesday. It's going good. It's been a little bit slow. The vendor tells us it's pretty slow whenever it starts up anywhere with these kind of drive-through events. We, during the work session earlier tonight, I asked council if they're willing to expand that to biz, borough business owners and their employees. So councils seem to be agreeable to that. If somebody would like, like to make a motion to amend the agenda, to add that resolution on, to amend the resolution for the testing, to open it up to borough businesses and their employees, regardless of where they live.
Giles McCormick.
Tilly, a second.
Um, oh. Okay, um, so this is a motion to amend its resolution.
The, the agenda.
2022, 40.
Agenda.
Agenda.
Sorry. The resolution to amend the agenda to include a resolution, amending resolution 2022 regarding COVID testing.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, so the amend, agenda will be amended to include that resolution. I guess at the start of the regular agenda?
Uh, could we just put it in the consent agenda, or should it be held separately? Because it is a, an add-on.
Tara question? I don't know, Tara?
Sorry, I would put that, I would just put it onto the regular agenda, just because it is a, a last-minute addition.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and put that at the beginning of the regular agenda before the presentation. It should be pretty quick to do that. And finally, in my report, a potential redeveloper for the Nilcanth property, colloquially known as Guitar Boy Property, made a presentation to the Agway redevelopment committee last week. It's an interesting proposal. I'll have them coming to council to present that coming up. Perhaps at the next meeting or the one after, I don't know. But in February, they'll come along and present what they'd like to do there. And it's kind of weird. These guys have been around coming up for three years. One of the first people who really reached out to me after I became mayor, and then COVID happened, and then it got really bogged down. There were two Conrail easements on the property that literally took like 18 months to get cleared up. So George, be glad you don't have any Conrail easements on that Liberty Village, because it was, it was a huge hassle for those guys and quite a lot of calls to make it happen. But it's a creative, and I look forward to having them come and present that to council, or however we decide to do it sometime next month. And that's all I have. That moves us on to a council member's report. I'll start with, uh, Caitlin, Councilwoman Caitlin Giles McCormick.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Um, the snowflakes around town are scheduled to come down this Wednesday, January 26th. We're also getting some quotes from Holiday Outdoor Decor for more energy-efficient and customizable, customizable lightings. Everybody loves the snowflakes, but let's, let's see what our alternatives are. So I'm excited to have those conversations with them. The planning board met on January 12th for their reorganization meeting, and I'm getting accustomed to my new role there, um, and diving into some of the, the, catching up on some of their recent approvals and, and it's, it's an awesome place to be, and I'm happy to be there, and there's good folks there. So, thank you for that. I did take place in the Agway, um, development, potential redeveloper presentation that, um, the mayor just referred to. Excited to see the enthusiasm, um, and people coming, um, to town for, to be more involved, to take, utilize all that we have here. And I think that one in particular is a pretty interesting, um, opportunity for town and that, that gateway section of town. Also met, um, with the DPW, back to, um, Department of Public Works. This, about two weeks ago, a week and a half ago, I'm sure Kim will have a more concise, um, report than I am on that meeting. But again, just happy to be back in the swing of things and go, going from there. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin. My apologies. I, Jeremy, thank you for letting me know my camera was off. I turned it off during the pledge, because nobody ha- should have to look at my fat belly while I stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Next up is Councilwoman Elizabeth Rosetti.
Uh, thank you. Good evening. Um, not too much to report from my end, but, um, I've been in touch with our property maintenance code enforcement officer several times over the last few weeks. I'm happy to report that there have been, um, some situations that are being handled. They're really paying attention this year to maintenance and repairs for safety regarding sidewalks around the borough. So all is moving smoothly on that end. And, um, you know, a few things to address, but nothing major, and, um, they're all being taken care of. So that's all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Council President Jeremy Long.
Hi, good evening, folks. Uh, just a few things. Uh, Police Department, um, I should be able to share some data and statistics from a year-end report for 2021 at the next council meeting. For now, nothing new to report. Um, and like I said, that, those numbers, that information I'll share with, uh, council members before our meeting, and, and some maybe dig into a couple of, a couple of pieces of data, um, that kind of strike me, I guess. Uh, on January 31st, mental health group, along with Chief Rotella and Officer Emanuel, will be meeting for a Zoom conversation with one of the directors of Hunterdon Medical Center, in the hope to better clarify our aims, to figure out an alternative to mental distress calls. As I've stated in previous council reports, we're hoping to see what programs or possible remedies there are for individuals experiencing mental health challenges that don't necessarily require police presence. So we've been able to make a connection with the hospital, and this continues to evolve. Funding community partnership, a number of items there. Um, in regards to Liberty Village, the FCP did host two community meetings with George Vallone. Over 150 people attended Liberty Village in-person and online recording. George spent over an hour answering questions, and that recording should be posted on the loveflamington.com website, uh, and is going to be posted on a borough website as well. Courthouse Square updates. The FCP will communicate directly with the businesses regarding construction schedules to the best of their ability. We will create, the FCP, I should say, will create signage and messaging as needed to help ensure that the businesses remain accessible during construction. The Courthouse Square site is an excellent place to get information about what's happening with the project, uh, as they have updates there periodically. Promotions and events, uh, we have an entertaining Valentine's Day promotion coming up, so stay tuned, and Super Bowl promotions. Uh, and they will be announcing a viewer watch party site for our own Kimmy Getz, who we are waiting on, we're, uh, who, we are waiting on more specific schedules to announce indoor and possibly outdoor locations. The FCP should be able to, should have our annual calendar posted to get all the exciting news and informations about, and information about February, with the return of many favorite outdoor events and some new business. Excited to announce that many new businesses have opened at the end of last year and the past month. Please check the Love Flemington website to sign up for a newsletter for more information. A new job at the SVP will be posted, uh, available on the website. Looking forward to hiring a great helper, who's an excellent fit for the work at hand. Civic engagement, uh, if you're interested in helping out, please send me an email, jlong@historicflamington.com, and I'll add you to the list. Right now, I have two residents who've expressed interest in helping in this endeavor. I'm hoping to get some educational material available to residents via Borough Mail, and to get the word out as to what productive and effective civic engagement can look like. Once we have a few more people, uh, we'll be able to hold an initial meeting and set up some goals, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Council Vice President Jess Hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there've been some weather delays with the groundwork for the community garden, uh, but we are hopeful that it will start this week. Flemington DIY announced that their new space will be where Enjoy Yourself was on Stangle Road. I, I know I am very much looking forward to seeing what they do with that space in the outdoor area right next to it. Flemington DIY is also looking for volunteers. The Environmental Commission is also looking for volunteers. Um, please email me at Jess jhand@historicflamington.com if you can help out. Um, our, the Environmental Commission's next meeting is Monday, February 21st at 7:00 PM via Zoom. And I also attended the Agway Development Meeting with, um, with the mayor and sorry, I want to say council president, but, uh, councilperson Giles McCormick. Um, so it's exciting stuff, so I'm, uh, hoping to that you guys all get to see that, the public meeting soon, and next Monday, uh, we have the mental health meeting, and that's it for me.
Excellent. Next up is Councilman Malik Johnston.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I've touched base with, uh, Shade Tree. I attended the reorg meeting. I touched base with the animal control, the courts, Flemington House Museum and Gardens and Library. Uh, I will have more to report next session.
Excellent. And Dim and Clean Up Duty tonight will be Councilwoman Kim Tilly.
Alrighty. It was the 11th that we had our DPW meeting, and we just went over some beginning of the year things, and really looking forward to getting the, uh, Hope Well and Do We Ave project started this year, as well as, uh, looking forward to some traffic studies that we want to do through the borough, just to look to see where our, our traffic is, and possibly some e-waste pickups, and maybe even something, some kind of composting thing along the way. Uh, also on the 11th, then, we had a meeting, and I was introduced to George Vallone. Just to, we got a preview of the what is it, the presentation that he's going to do tonight, real quick. Uh, I also had a fire officer meeting on the 11th, but I had COVID that week, and it just kicked my butt, so I've just been in email contact with them, uh, regarding their budget is what we're, we're really heading into the beginning of the year. I've had some email exchanges with the Flemington Raritan First Aid and Rescue Squad regarding two vehicles that have expended their useful life. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight to donate those vehicles to the rescue squad, so that they can practice whatever it is they need to on those, and some budgetary items as well. And as the mayor said, the OEM side, we've talked about expanding the criteria to access people to the testing site, and that's it for me.
Excellent. Thank you. That brings us to our first public comment session. If you are new here, uh, just so you know, you raise your hand, you can raise your hand by clicking on the raise hand icon. Depending upon your operating system, it's either at the bottom of your screen or the top of your screen. I'll call on you. Once I call on you, please identify yourself and where you're calling from. That means your address and the town that you're calling from as well. As I pointed out at the top of the meeting, when George Vallone does his presentation for council in advance of council voting and the doesn't, designation of the redeveloper, that will not be a public hearing. You will not have the opportunity to speak at that time. So if you want to have something to say now, before we do the designation vote, now is the time that you should do that. I also see that we have one call-in user. If that person would like to speak and raise their hand, it's star nine to raise your hand on the Zoom using a phone, and once we call on you, it would be star six. So we'll give it a minute. Sally, did you receive any emails?
No, there weren't any.
Okay. Okay, not seeing anybody raise their hands. We will move on past that. Uh, brings us to approval of the minutes. If we could have a motion to approve the minutes of the January 10th, 2022, regular council meeting.
Move. Oh, sorry. Uh, Tilly, a second.
Sorry. Um, all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Okay, the minutes from the January 10th meeting are approved.
Excellent. That brings us to our consent agenda. If we could have a motion to approve the consent agenda, or does anyone want to pull anything off of the consent agenda?
Handle move.
Tilly, a second.
Any discussion, any, anybody want to pull anything off for discussion? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Right, the consent agenda is approved.
Thank you. That brings us to our regular agenda. Before we get into the regular agenda that's published, if we could have a motion to, um, to approve, a motion and a second, the resolution expanding the COVID testing site to borough employee, borough businesses and their employees.
Tilly, a move.
Hold on a second.
Do you have any discussion?
I, I just would, what to repeat what you said to us earlier in the work session, um, that borough residents don't have to make an appointment. As long as they've got their ID stating that they live in the borough, they can walk up, um, during the, um, hours that it's open. So just making, just reiterating that.
Does that include the people that work for the county? Does that include the people that work for the county? Since they're in the borough?
I guess, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll see how it goes. You know, the, the original plan was all along to kind of get it going, take some baby steps. We just want to make sure we don't end up with lines snaking through people's neighborhoods. That's the biggest concern. That's why we're kind of doing it in baby steps. Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
All right. This is a vote to amend resolution twenty twenty-two forty-two regarding COVID testing to expand the criteria for the people that can use the service to include rural businesses and their employees.
Yes.
Johnston.
Ms. Jas McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, a resolution twenty twenty-two forty-two will be amended as stated.
Excellent. Thank you. That brings us to our, uh, to our feature presentation tonight. We'll be starting the presentation on Liberty Village and potential plans by the potential redeveloper, George Vallone from Hoboken Brownstone. George, if you could just kind of give us the rundown as to who you are, why council should vote uh, on the designated redeveloper as well. And then council, if we could let George go through his thing and then we'll do questions. We also have Andy Brewer here, who is our special counsel for redevelopment, who can answer any questions about the designation uh, that we're going to be voting on this evening. George, the floor is yours. Thanks.
Okay. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, great. So, uh, thanks everybody for being here and for including me on your agenda tonight. You guys have a definitely a professional routine as you go through your business. It was fun to watch. I haven't been on many of these council Zoom meetings. I'm usually face to face Adam. It's, uh, it's very smoothly handled. Um, so I'm just a real quick introduction. Um, my name is George Vallone. I co-founded the Hoboken Brownstone Company back in nineteen eighty. Um, not too surprisingly, we were buying brownstones at the time for twenty, thirty thousand dollars and we were gut renovating them into brownstones. So that's why the Hoboken Brownstone Company, not too creative, but it's accurate. Um, this is our forty-first year and, um, we've been focused after I would say the first seven years in Hoboken. We started looking for larger assemblages of property and that pushed us into the, from the southeast corner town where we started, which is within a five-minute walking distance of the path train. We moved to the southwest part of town, bought a factory, actually it was a warehouse. And, uh, after we knocked it down, we discovered that the property was contaminated. So sort of accidentally, we got into the brownfield remediation business and that was our first foray into that. And back then it was a lot different than it is now, but ultimately we found our way through it and we kind of liked it. We liked the idea that we were cleaning up the earth. And, um, you know, making places better for people to live in than they were before. And, uh, that's pretty much what we've done ever since. We mainly focused on brownfield redevelopment, um, mainly in the urban areas. We built, uh, had a construction company for twenty-five years, inner city construction incorporated, also known as ICCI. We built housing in, uh, Jersey City, Patterson, Trenton, Newark, in addition to Hoboken. Um, we performed all our own construction for twenty-five years. After about ten years in the mid nineties, we started doing third-party work. We also did property management. We managed every condo association we sponsored for our first twenty-five years. And, um, and in two thousand and five, we changed our business strategy and we got out of construction. We got out of property management and we just focused on development. So that's, um, that's our background now. At the moment, we have uh, seven blocks of property in Jersey City under development with about a little under two thousand units, about a third of them are finished. We have a project breaking ground in Bayonne right now, a single building, three hundred and fifty-four units, and we have a small project up in Troy, New York. Where one of our interns who, uh, interned with us when he was going to graduate school and came to work for us after that, where he's, where he grew up. Um, I actually lived right next door to Flemington for a, a long time. I was in Clinton Township. We moved there in the, um, mid nineties when my two uh, my older two children were getting up to school age and we were looking for a good school system. Um, found a little farm in Clinton Township. We actually were right on Stanton Station Road and so we had a Flemington zip code for, I guess, the post offices figured out it was easier for Flemington to deliver our mail. So we actually had the oh eight two two, uh, zip code for Flemington. And, um, although we lived in Clinton Township, um, went to the mall a lot, went into the restaurants in Flemington a lot. My relatives from Italy would come over and one of the first things they wanted to do was go to Liberty Outlet Mall. And fill up their suit, their empty suitcases with stuff to take home. So we, we had a lot of experience, spent a lot of time there. Used to be, uh, we used to be great fun to travel, uh, down to Flemington, spend some time at the mall, go shopping on Main Street and otherwise enjoy the town. Um, so that's pretty much our background. Um, unless anybody has any questions, I think I'll see if I can screen share the PowerPoint that I've been using for the last two community, uh, presentations. Anybody have any thoughts or questions before I do that? Okay, so hearing none. Let's see if I can do this. Okay. How's that? Can you guys see that? Anybody? Somebody?
No. See you, not your screen.
You can see me and not my screen. Okay. Let me try that again. I was supposed to tap that.
There you go. There you go.
Okay. And now let me do this. How about that?
Yep.
Okay, great. Let me go to make it full screen so you can see. There we go. Okay. So, um, that's just the opener. Um, little bit on me that, you know, that I didn't say so far. Um, I believe we're very well qualified with forty-one years of experience in brownfield redevelopment, urban and suburban. Um, our last large project in Hoboken was a, the, uh, reuse of the Maxwell House Coffee Factory, which was a twenty-four acre waterfront site that stretched from Tenth Street to Twelfth Street on the river. Um, we bought the factory in ninety-nine, uh, went through an extensive community engagement process, ended up with a teardown of the entire factory. We built five new city blocks. Four of the blocks contained, uh, eight hundred and thirty-two units, uh, about a quarter million feet of retail and office, fifteen hundred parking spots. Uh, and we donated the six acres on the waterfront as a public park. It's called Maxwell Park now. Um, and we donated that to the city along with a fifty-year operating and maintenance subsidy, which added about thirty-five cents a square foot to everybody's condo maintenance fee. Um, we then, the, in two thousand and five, we put, we brought in a joint venture partner to build out the project. We then moved into Jersey City and picked up the first of several pieces of property. The first was the Van Lier Chocolate Factory. Um, we have completed that project. That's a three-phase project that sits on nine acres, three city blocks. And it contains, uh, all three buildings, all added up together, six hundred and thirty-seven units. That's finished. That's fully occupied. Right across, uh, Mammoth Street from the chocolate factory, we bought the NRS Logistics Center, which was three city blocks. We have approvals for eleven hundred and eighty-two units, some retail space and parking. Um, we donated two acres of the six acres on the three blocks as a public park. That park just opened last month. Um, and it's called Coal Street Park because it sits on Coal Street between, uh, Sixteenth and Eighteenth Street. Um, so as I said, I'm local to the area. I live next door and now I'm, now I'm in Bedminster. Right? We downsized, uh, when our older two went off to college. Our youngest was just coming up. Um, she, we were at the, we joined the Mac at the Conception Church and actually her grade, Julia's class was the first class to go from pre-K all the way through to eighth grade. Um, and she then got a scholarship, full scholarship to go to Mount St. Mary's and watch young. So we needed to move closer to, to watch young and that's, my wife found a very nice house in Bedminster where we've lived there ever since. This is just a quick shot. The top half of the screen is the factory when we bought it in ninety-nine and the bottom half is looking, the, the top one is looking east toward the river and toward Manhattan. The bottom one is looking west from the river, uh, across the project. And you can see the, uh, the four blocks there are built out, uh, on, in the foreground, right in front of the picture is the park and it's not a great shot because the best parts of the park are below the bottom of the screen, but it's a six-acre park and, uh, we did some very cool things there. Uh, we, we actually built a replica of the New York Yacht Club, which was started there in eighteen forty-six. And, uh, we found it up in Newport, Rhode Island on a barge, on a historic barge where it now sits permanently. And we, uh, the, uh, the New York Yacht Club gave us permission to go up there and, and do a takeoff of it. And we built an exact replica of it just to the left of the screen here where it used to sit on a beach back in the, uh, mid eighteen hundreds. Just a little fun fact. So tonight we are hoping, we are hopeful that we can be designated as the developer because we are very interested in repurposing the, uh, the site, uh, into something that is going to improve the downtown by increasing the flow of people and foot traffic. Complete the transformation of the South End into a live, work, play, mixed-use pedestrian bit-oriented neighborhood. We're going to be increasing the tax ratables, which have obviously been decimated by the, uh, exit from the town of the three largest tax, but three largest commercial taxpayers, which was the, uh, the mall itself, the Makasa and the Flemington Fur, uh, operations. Um, so we're going to be, uh, hopefully putting a decent amount of ratables back on the books. Uh, we're going to be remediating a rather contaminated property. Um, those of you that have been around Flemington for a while probably know that before the mall was built and for probably close to a century before that, there was an iron forge, uh, where the mall is right now, where the stores, uh, part of the mall is, not the parking lot. And, uh, and it, uh, as typical iron forge type of operations, it left a lot of contamination behind. Um, when the mall was built, there was no DEP and therefore there was no requirement to investigate it or do anything. So they basically paved over it with about three hundred and twenty thousand red bricks and built sixty-eight stores of which there are about six left today and those leases all expire over the next, uh, year or two. I think one goes out three years, but I'm fairly certain that if I offered them the opportunity to break their lease and go, they probably would because every time I've been in those stores, there's usually more salespeople in the stores than there are customers. So, um, as I mentioned, we're going to do the environmental contamination. Uh, oh, so that's where I was going with the environmental. So the, what we discovered was we've, we've done a pretty thorough site investigation. We've drilled ninety boreholes in the property. Most of them are in the soil. Uh, about ten percent went down into the groundwater and this is all beneath, most beneath the wall. We did a little bit of testing on the parking lot, but the historical records were that that was prior to its use as a parking lot. That was a farm and farms are typically not contaminated with industrial types of contaminants. Uh, they just have things like pesticides, which are not difficult to deal with. Uh, but the mall site itself has a significant amount of soil contamination. There's, uh, solvents and oils and lots of petroleum-based products that are that I guess were just dumped or spilled into the soil under the forge. And, um, and so there's about three-quarter million dollars of soil removal that's going to be required. Um, that's the bad news. The good news is the groundwater tests have shown that there is contamination in the groundwater. That's a result of the contamination in the soil impacting the groundwater, but the levels of contamination have been slowly decreasing. Uh, the owner of the property has monitored it for about two years and we've been monitoring it for a little under a year. So we have about three years of groundwater test data right now, which indicates the, uh, contamination levels in the aquifer beneath the mall are slowly, very slowly going down. Um, our experts say that once the, uh, soils, once the contaminated soils that are impacting the groundwater are removed, um, that the water will begin to clean itself up at a faster rate. So the remedy that we're, that our licensed site remediation professional is, is, uh, is going with in terms of the remedial action work plan is going to be, uh, soil removal and groundwater monitoring. The, the groundwater remedy is actually called monitored natural attenuation. Uh, natural attenuation is just a fancy way of saying the groundwater is cleaning itself up because of the natural influence of, of, uh, rainwater infiltrating down into the ground and the normal movement of groundwater from the properties around us, which do not have the similar contamination. So over time, it continues to dilute the contaminants in the groundwater and it naturally attenuates back to the way it was before the forge, uh, started polluting it, which was basically clean water. Um, over time, uh, and we will do that monitoring for thirty years. Uh, us or any subsequent owners. Actually, what will happen is the homeowners association for the townhouses will take over the monitoring for their property and whoever owns the rental, uh, pro, uh, property on the parking lot would do, would handle the monitoring for the groundwater under the parking lot. We also have a second environmental issue and that's regarding flooding. Um, so the, almost the entire parking lot is located in a flood plain. And in a flood plain, you're not allowed to put residential housing on gray. So what you can do is you can build what you call podium buildings. A podium building is a building where you build a parking garage on the first floor and then you put the housing on top of the parking garage. So the, the parking garage acts like a podium for the housing that's above it. So that's why they're called podium buildings. You're allowed to do podium buildings in flood zones. However, the cost of a podium building is a lot higher than the cost of building an apartment building on grade and putting all the parking on the surface around it. So we have proposed to the DEP a flood mitigation strategy, which would allow us to elevate the parking lot several feet and get it out of the flood zone and take twice as much acreage along the stream, a couple of properties we've identified that this could potentially be, be taken, uh, be done with. And we will excavate those properties because they're not in the flood zone. And essentially what we've been doing is every acre of, of flood storage that the parking lot now provides, we would provide two acres of flood storage on these adjacent properties that are in the same flood basin on either side of the brook. So the DEP met with us, the assistant commissioner walked the site. We told them what we were thinking about doing, asked him if he thought it made any sense. He said, it sounded like a good idea, but you're going to have to come back to us with the science. So the way you do the sciences is that you have to start off step one. It's a couple of steps, but step one is you do a flyer over of the property with airplanes that are equipped with topographic recording gear. And they basically record the topography of all the properties that we have in mind that they're, they've, uh, they've flown over the parking lot. So we have the topography of our parking lot and all the other properties adjacent to the stream on both sides of the stream. Um, in the basin where we sit, which is basin between Route twelve and Mine Street and in the basin above Mine Street. So, um, so we, you take the topographic information, it gets downloaded to my surveyor. He puts it on the surveys. The surveys then go to a flood modeling company and the flood modeling company runs it through their computer models. And, uh, and they'll come up with a report and the report, we believe, we'll say, and in talking to the modeling company that are going to do the work, they think so too. They think that it will say that this, this proposal we're making would be a net benefit, not only for the people within our basin, but also for the people downstream. So what we're essentially doing is we're creating more places for the floodwaters to go within the basin uh, before they overflow the flood zone and start to impact the houses on, well, on, on the west side, it's Devores Farms and they had significant damage from Ida that just blew through there, uh, not too long ago. And on our side, uh, the houses that are just north of the parking lot, uh, the, the three or four houses that are adjacent to the, to the stream, uh, they had some damage too uh, on the backs of their houses. So we believe that by, uh, this flood mitigation strategy we've proposed, if it's approved by the DEP, it'll definitely lessen the damage from flooding within our basins and also it'll damage that, it'll, it'll reduce the damage of people that live downstream by holding the waters back in larger containment areas for longer periods of time. So it's, uh, it's not definite by any means that the DEP is going to approve this. Um, I guess they have three choices. One is to just say no, you can't do anything with your parking lot. Uh, the second would be, well, we'll let you build on some of it. And the third, which is the one I hope for is they'll say, this is great. We love it. We're getting twice the storage capacity we have now. Have at it. And, uh, and then we would be able to build on the entire parking lot. So the site plan that I'm going to show you towards the end of our, of this PowerPoint, uh, this evening is going to be the best case scenario, which is that we get the, uh, approval. the best case scenario, which is that we get the uh approval to build on all of the parking lot. So obviously we will, as I said, that's the best outcome. It's entirely possible. They may only let us build on half the parking lot or possibly less than half the parking lot. But for now, we're moving ahead optimistically that we're going to get the approval and we're going to show you what the plan would look like if we got the approval. So this map just shows some commuting time. Uh obviously, we've all adapted to COVID. Uh my my three kids all work remotely. I'm working a lot more remotely. I'm sure all you guys are too, as evidenced by this council meeting. Um but people are going to need to get to the work centers. And this map sim- simply shows the mileage from Flemington to the various major work centers uh in the region, uh which would give you a rough idea of their commuting times. So, but we studied the um Stan Tech report, we've we studied the uh Zimmerman Volk report. Uh we looked at the master plan and we took cues from all of that as to what we thought the plan should be. Um and what the report said was, is that Flemington, in order to re- regain its vitality that it had when uh when the mall was cranking and the other three big commercial operations were bringing in lots of people to town, um it had a lot of vitality. And so what the reports have indicated to us is that they need more people in Flemington visiting the downtown, supporting local businesses along Stangle, Mine, Main Street, the feed mill office. Um and and our project, we believe, does just that. Um it should reverse Flemington's de-commercialization because of a lack of traffic. Uh and that lack of traffic originated from a couple of things. It was the change in shopping habits from the malls to the highway big box and and most importantly, probably to the online shopping, which is just come on like gangbusters since COVID locked everybody at home. Um I mentioned the mall has been gone now from sixty eight stores to six. Um the population increase would help stabilize the local economy. Um and that can only be done by more housing. So the studies that we looked at said that they suggested as many as a thousand new units of housing would be needed um to help revitalize the town. And that's the main reason we went with all housing on the uh Liberty Village uh property. Uh with the exception of two little things I'll talk about in a minute. We did not want to put a lot of retail because we thought that that would cannibalize the other uh retail uh highways, not highways, you know, the retail streets, uh the main streets that that the Stangles right up the road from us. We didn't want to add more retail because we just wanted all of our people to help out their retail. Um so that's that's the underpinnings of the design philosophy that we're going to show you tonight. So the redevelopment is going to be environmentally possible. I told you about that. It's market feasible. Um we believe it's financially viable, notwithstanding the high cost of the environmental challenges and the demolition costs to take the mall away. Uh it's still financially viable. We believe there's a lot of community benefits. One of the ones that I'm pretty tight about is that after going to your town hall for some business related to this redevelopment, I saw that it's kind of underfacilitated. It's in the back of the firehouse, as you all know. And um it's not, it doesn't speak to the quality of a town like Flemington as as I think it should. So I came up with the idea, not me personally, but you know, our team in discussions of things we might do for the town is we thought that we would donate the the Polo Building, which is the two newest buildings on the property, which were built most recently after the original stores were built on the east side of the railroad tracks was the Polo Building and the Timberland Building. Those are the newest and the uh nicest buildings uh in the whole mall right now. So we uh we have a plan that if we are approved as developer and if we get our site plans approved, we are intending to donate the Polo Building as Flemington's new town hall. One of the comments we got was that it might be nice to see if we could put a small food store um in the development so that if people wanted to get some eggs or a quart of milk and you know, they didn't want to get in their car and drive to the supermarket, uh because they only need a few things, it would be nice to have a small food store in the in the development. Well, it turns out the Polo Building has a one-story part and a two-story part and a three-story part. The one-story part is to the north, the most northern piece of that building. And I thought, looking at it, that if we were to demise that space into its own space that and see if we could find a food, small food operator, that that would be a perfect spot to put a food store. Um and then it would be part of the town hall, so it would pay rent to the town hall. And then that rent would help offset the cost of having the town hall and take a little bit of that carrying cost and operating cost off taxpayers' back. Um in addition to that, there'll be walking paths throughout the project. I'll show you those when we get to the site plan. Um there's going to be a dramatic increase in pervious coverage. It's not hard to do because the whole site's a hundred percent impervious right now. Uh back when it was built, there were no stormwater rules, there were no requirements for a certain amount of pervious and impervious coverage. And so uh they covered the whole site with impervious uh structures, the the favors on the mall, the asphalt under the parking lots. There's absolutely no infiltration of groundwater the way the mall was currently built. We're going to, as you'll see from the site, there's a significant amount of increased pervious coverage. Um we think it's consistent with the local objectives as we understood them in the uh Stan Tech plans and the Zimmerman plans and the master plan. So we um, as I said earlier, we took our cues from the research that the town did, which was incredibly helpful. I have to thank the mayor and council and anybody that was involved in getting the funding and hiring, you know, really, really reputable companies like Stan Tech and and Volk Zimmerman. Having those studies done while I was still in my due diligence period was probably the single best thing that the town could have done to get me and my team comfortable with the economics and the marketability of the project. That was a very, very smart thing to do. It helped us a lot to get to the point where we decided we're going to go ahead with this project uh and apply for these approvals. Um so that's just the map uh to the right. You see the railroad tracks coming through the uh the middle there, a little to the right of the middle, to the right of that's the mall, to the left of that's the parking lot. That's just a little map of the area. Uh the redevelopment plan is coming in another couple of slides. I didn't take that one out, I should have. Um so the the strategy is that we're going to break the property down into phases. Um and the reason for that is that phase two, which is the parking lot, has a lot more work to be done to figure out if the D E P to complete the due diligence we're doing and the scientific modeling of the flood storage uh model uh mitigation strategy that we're proposing, that's going to take a lot longer. So we're going to make that its own phase. Um phase one will be the mall itself and we will knock down everything, take up the bricks, hopefully find a good use for them. Um dig up the contaminated soil, run in all new utilities and build a hundred and forty uh for sale townhouses. At the same time, we're building the townhouses, we're going to build a fifth, of which four of the hundred and forty are going to be sold at affordable guideline prices. We're going to build a fifty-five unit, fifty-five, sixty units of affordable housing on the Timberland site. Because that site, as well as where the Polo Building is, which we hope is going to be your new town hall, that's not in the flood zone. So in order to ensure that all the, all the affordable housing gets built in the first phase, um it, that building will be built on the Timberland site while the townhouses are going. It'll probably be done before the townhouses are complete, but certainly they'll be running up together, uh at least for a part of the time until it's done and the remaining townhouses continue to get built out based on their absorption rates. Um phase two will be a rental project. And right now, um laying out the entire parking lot with on-grade four-story buildings with surface parking, we get a hundred and eighty units. Um it's possible that if we only get half the parking lot, well, then it might only be half or whatever percentage we get will fit what we can get, but it it shouldn't exceed a hundred and eighty units. Unless in the future, I mean, if it takes so long to get the D E P to approve this, that the rents in the area are high enough to be able to support a podium building on the parking lot. Well, that might be a different story and we could certainly come back and report the results of all of that. And we can have a discussion about changing the site plan. But at this point in time, we think the best case scenario is a hundred and eighty rental units in five multifan buildings uh on a hundred percent of the parking lot. That's, I believe that's probably the best case scenario for us in terms of the volume of uh units that can be produced. Um I mentioned the million dollars of site remediation with the soil removal and capping and groundwater monitoring of the natural attenuation. Uh talked about the redevelopment for housing within walking distance to your current districts. Don't need to go over that again. Um the benefits to Flemington, I probably said this already, but uh we don't think there'll be, there'll be little or no additional demand for local services that isn't covered by existing uh capacities, your police, your fire. Uh we believe those are sufficient. These are going to be state-of-the-art fire-protected buildings, so they're not going to, I don't think they're going to have a whole lot of incidents like that. Um the new tax revenue that's going to be generated, this is going to be somewheres. Uh just give me one second. It's going to be somewheres between sixty to seventy million dollars of ratables if the entire project gets built out, which should put somewheres around two million, two and a quarter million dollars of taxes to the town under today's tax rates. Um mentioned the other benefits, the remediation, the affordable housing, the new town hall, the bike paths, flood damage improvements, if we're allowed to do that. Um oh, part of the property, about a hundred feet wide from where the stores are out to Brown Street, that also comes along with the mall. That's part of the mall that we're buying. Um there's a historic building um on the south side of that, of those two blocks. We're going to preserve that building. We're going to subdivide it onto its own lot, so it has a yard and a driveway that goes out to Brown Street. The other half of that, that'll probably take about half of that lot and the other half of that lot and the full-size lot that's adjacent to it, to the north side of it, um will be combined and made into a park. Uh we'll call it, I don't know what we'll call it, maybe the Brown Street Park. Uh and we're going to be meeting with the Brown Street folks. Um I think it's next week, we have a meeting with them. We're going to talk about what types of things they'd like to see on the park. Um part of our bike path system goes through the park uh for people that want to bike through uh to Brown Street or from Brown Street into the project. Um we got a comment at one of the two outreach meetings that they wanted to make sure that the bike path had a fence alongside it because the little kids are running around playing in the park. We don't want them running out of the bike path and getting run over. So that's obviously a smart suggestion we're going to bring up to that. Um some of the Brown Street folks are having some issues with the fact that they may look out their back of their house and all the way at the end of their property, they're going to see four-story townhouses. So I threw out some suggestions, like maybe we could plant some trees along the back of the fence, some evergreens that would be year-round and you know, after a couple of years, they probably grow to the point where they wouldn't see it. And uh a few years after, they wouldn't see much of it. And then a few years after that, they might not see any of it. The trees keep growing uh and and stay nice and healthy. So they thought that was a good idea. They thought it was worth meeting. We're going to meet with them next week and we're going to talk about, you know, which which properties are affected. I actually went on Google Earth and I was looking at it. It looks like about half the houses on Brown Street already have trees at the back of their property. So, you know, we're going to meet, we're going to maybe walk up and down the street, go into some folks' backyards and figure out, um hopefully figure out something that'll that'll make them comfortable with uh the fact that we're going to put all these new buildings up uh behind their uh the back of their yards. So the next step uh to get to the point where we can build this project, uh the next step is tonight. Um if we're designated as developer, that would be great. And then we can uh have the uh authority to start negotiating a redevelopment agreement with town. We're hoping we can take, we can do that in a month or two. Uh as soon as that's done, well, not as soon as that's done, while that's being done, we're going to be preparing our site plan application to the planning board. And then hopefully the minute the redeveloper agreement is uh agreed to and voted in by you guys, we we'd be just about locked and loaded, ready to submit the site plan application to the planning board. Uh the planning board will then have one or more meetings, depending upon how long each meeting goes. Um and then there'll be a vote for approval. Uh the following planning board hearing, there'll be a memorializing document that memorializes the vote. That has to get published into paper. That usually takes a couple of days. And then uh forty-five days after publication in the newspaper, the local newspaper, the vote is beyond the appeal period. That forty-five days is the statutory appeal period for a site plan of planning board. And so hopefully in forty-five days, if nobody appeals it, we're then fully vested and the work can begin. Um while that's going on, our L S R P, our licensed site remediation uh professional will continue to review the uh site investigation work that continues to come back as we fir- as we go deeper and deeper into the site investigation. And he'll come up with the environmental remediation plans called the remedial action work plan. And that will be the blueprint, exact blueprint for how we're going to have to remediate the site. Um all indications are it's going to be exactly what I told you uh a little while ago. It's going to be soil removal of the contaminated soil and monitoring the natural attenuation of the groundwater. And the soil will be capped, the entire site will be capped, whether it's pervious cap or impervious cap, the entire site will be capped. Um and then, of course, the last step, and I'm sure this is going to be the longest step, is to get through the D E P to see whether or not they're going to approve our flood mitigation strategy for the site. By the way, the flood mitigation strategy has to do with, we've targeted about three properties. One is just north of the parking lot. As you're heading up toward Mine Street, there's a uh pretty open, I call it the triangle, because that's the shape of it. Um and that is uh that goes from right where our parking lot ends, right up to Mine Street. Um across the brook is uh Devores Farms and we're we're having discussions with them right now, which hopefully will lead to their approval to uh let us take some of the uh flood storage and put it on their property. Um they have a very, above Mine Street, they have a really, really perfect field right there, right now, that they own. And uh I'm I'm hopeful that they're going to see that it's going to be good for them, it's going to be good for the people that live on the Flemington side of the river of the brook, and it's going to be good for the people downstream and they'll agree to go along with it. But essentially what we want to do is we want to excavate that field, uh which is way above flood zone, uh above the flood zone. We want to excavate that down so that it becomes in the flood zone. And then we will level it out, we'll put the topsoil back, because I don't need topsoil. I'm going to stockpile that. If they allow me to do this thing, I'll be stockpiling the topsoil on their property. And then when I'm all done lowering the grade of the property, we'll put the topsoil back and we'll plant whatever they want on top. If they want the exact same grass they have now, that's fine. They want something different, we'll plant something different. Um we hope we can be good neighbors for them uh and help them out with their mission with some financial help. And uh hopefully we'll all agree that this is a great plan and everybody gets to win. And uh and they'll be, and they'll let us use some of their property for the for the mitigation. Okay, so here's the site plan. Uh this is obviously an aerial view and to the right you see the townhomes. Um there's a hundred and forty of them. Uh the railroad tracks goes down alongside that, right where it does now. Um we are connecting um the main street that goes through the property from Route twelve. That's the exact place the curb cut is now. They'll still go in that way and they'll be able to go all the way up through the townhouse development up to Central Ave. Uh by the way, I was told last time that they misspelled Church Street. It says Crutch Street, so sorry about that. And also I was told Central Ave, I'm not sure it's spelled right, and I just did not have time to fix that for tonight. So my apologies for that. But anyway, um the road will go straight through the development. It'll come out where Church Street is and it'll, it'll cross over the railroad tracks on the existing grade level crossing that's there today. Um those same folks that are either going north through the townhouses or south through the townhouses will have an option to go across the railroad tracks, that street that goes across, which is exactly where the grade level crossing is today. And that's uh you you'll remember that when you do go across the tracks right there, the Polo Building is to the right. That will be the new town hall. The Timberland Building is to the left. That's where the affordable housing will be and it'll have its own parking lot. And then um further to the west, we've got the other four uh multifan buildings, four-story apartment buildings on grade with surface parking around them. The town hall, by the way, across the street from the town hall, there's a parking lot right now with about thirty cars uh capacity. That will be subdivided along with the town hall and together the town hall and the parking for the town hall, we're intending to donate to the town. We also would ask that when we do the donation documents, that we say in there that um other than working hours, like whatever your working hours are, nine to five, eight to four, whatever they are, that that would be for the municipal parking, that after hours, after work on And after hours, after work on weekend, uh, weekdays and on Saturdays and Sundays, we would like it so that that parking could be available to people that are. Uh, visiting the uh, various uh, businesses along Stangle Road there. Um. That's really the whole thing. I mean, I could go into endless amounts of minutia about this, but I think it's probably a better idea if I take a pause right now and see if anybody has any questions or comments. Or wants me to drill out down any deeper on anything I've gone through so far. So I'll take a pause.
So council, anyone, I'm going to throw a couple of things out there, just things. Why not a movie theater?
Um, that's a, that's a good question and it came up in both hearings that we had. Um, and I basically said, look, I've got. Twenty plus acres of parking here. If anybody wants to introduce me to a movie theater company that wants to come in here and either build or rent a movie. And they're financially capable and and uh, and experienced at running movie theaters, I would absolutely sit down and talk to them. Um, I don't believe there are any. I think the days of movie theaters are declining. Um, so anyway, the short answer is if you found somebody that was real, I would sit with them and see if we can work something out. But I suspect there's probably not anybody interested in that particular use.
Jeremy, you have your hand up.
Oh yeah, I just had a quick question. You, you mentioned uh, the, the fact that the Liberty Village is contaminated. Um, and you wanted to go forth with a natural attenuation. When you, you also did the project in Hoboken and that too was contaminated. Um, is there some sort of, is there a comparison you can make between the two? Do you see anything in common? Do you see anything strikingly different?
Um, actually, uh, that's a, that's an interesting question because it was actually the same remedy uh, in um, in, in Hoboken. The uh, this is really weird, but Maxwell House Coffee Factory was the home of the origins of decaffeinated coffee. Um, they built a building uh, on the peninsula, a very large area they filled out into the river back in the sixties when you were still allowed to fill out to your bulkhead line. Um, can't do that anymore unless you have a really, really good reason, but they were able to do it back then. So they created this giant peninsula. And on the peninsula, they built a big, big metal building. And in that building, they figured out how to make decaffeinated coffee. And and the way you made decaffeinated coffee back then was you soaked the coffee beans in trichlorethylene. And uh, any of you guys that know anything about trichlorethylene, I didn't know any of this until I did the project. Uh, it's TCE, it's chemical acronym and it's carcinogenic. So they were basically soaking the beans in a carcinogenic fluid to remove the caffeine. And then once that was done, they rinsed all the beans. They sent them over to the grinding and uh, to the roasting building and then they ground them up and they put them in cans and they sold it as Maxwell House decaffeinated coffee. Um, I have no idea whether the TCE, once it was rinsed off the beans, it no longer affected anybody. I don't even go there when the conversation comes up. All I know is that they used to fill the TCE after it was, the beans were soaking in it. They drained the tanks. They run the TCE through filters, put it in holding tanks and get it ready for the next batch of beans. Well, apparently the pipes under the decaf building were leaking. So from, let's say they were doing this in the sixties, planted eighty-nine, for almost like thirty years, TCE was leaching into the ground in the peninsula. So this all was discovered during the site investigation and again, the remedy was we had to remove all of that contaminated soil from the peninsula. Put clean fill back and cap the site. And the groundwater, which in that case was the Hudson River, was not impacted. Um, probably because it was such a huge body of water that at the, the traces of TCE that went into the river. And you know, mixed around with this enormous body of water, they probably just went down to non-detectable levels. Um, so you know, I think that uh. What they say dilution is the solution to pollution. It's true. And in this case, there was a lot of dilution that happened with that TCE. So we were able to monitor the uh, groundwater, which basically was the river, the river water. And uh, same thing here. We removed the soil and we monitored the groundwater and the groundwater, which was non-detectable back then, it's still non-detectable. Um, I believe if we went back to the DEP, maybe at the fifteen year mark or the twenty year mark and told them, guys, there's non-detect since the beginning of this thing. Why are we still monitoring? They would probably say, you're right. You don't have to monitor anymore. Um, which may be the case in Flemington, you know, ten or fifteen years from now, the levels of contamination may have gone down so dramatically. That even the little bit that's left, the DEP will agree, it's going to naturally clean itself up and they may let us off the hook on continuing to monitor for the full thirty years. But yeah, we're going to put in the budget, monitoring while we control the property. Um, under the law, if you have a homeowners association, they assume responsibility. Once they take control of the homeowners association, we build in the monitoring. Budget so they, they know it's there and they all agree. They pay their share and they continue. And on the rental side, the owners of the buildings of the rental building will also be responsible for monitoring on their, on their parcels. So it's uh, it's the same remedy, Jeremy. It's uh, soil remu- removal and monitoring of the groundwater. That was such a long answer, but that was the answer.
I like history lessons. Thank you.
Hey George, I have another question. Are you intending to build all the water and sewer pipes under those roads? And will that road be a public road or a private road?
We, we can go either way. I prefer public uh, because the folks are paying their taxes like everybody else. So I would prefer to donate all the roads to the town. But that, that's something we can talk about in the re developer agreement. But the first question was that we're going to build all the infrastructure. The answer to that is yes, we're going to do all new roads, all new pipes under the ground. The electrical utilities will be underground. You won't see any telephone poles or any of that stuff.
Excellent. And the little house over there in the parking lot off of Brown Street and historic site to remake. So it's your intent to uh, rehab that house and keep it uh, because it's a contributing site in our historic district.
It'd be renovated and put up for sale.
Excellent. You don't think your daughter's going to want to live there?
Oh boy. I sure want her to. My daughter and her partner and my new grandbaby who's now thirteen months old, they live in Chicago. And uh, I'm, I'm actually trying to bribe them. I told them I will give them the house if they'll move back. And they said, well dad, think about it.
Well, don't think about it. Flemington's going to be a really great town uh, pretty soon, I think.
Okay, if my parents had offered me a free house when I was their age, I wouldn't have thought, I would have said yes right away.
Yeah.
But.
Um. Okay. I have no other question. And I'm, I'm lucky enough and have the privilege, of course, to be able to call you and I have the questions. I don't want to take up any more time.
Fine. Somebody else I heard starting a question about, something about affordable housing. Who was that?
Yeah, the affordable housing, would that just be renters only or will people have the option to buy?
No, they have an option to buy the townhouses. Four of the townhouses will be uh, be offered at affordability prices. And then the remaining fifty-five or sixty will be rental apartments over in the parking lot. Okay.
And would, will the townhouses be intermixed?
Yes.
Okay. And sorry, Malik, I didn't mean to cut you off. Do you have, have more about that?
Nope, I'm good.
No, just thinking about. I just, I, and I don't, this may not be the right time for it, but in terms of affordable housing, making sure that they are comparable living. Um, conditions and arrangements and amenities and all of those things to um, the non-affordable, um, but the, the market rate stuff.
Um, Caitlin, that's a great question and it actually came up in both hearings in the last week, the same exact question. These are going to be built identically. If you walked into one before anybody lived there and you, and we told you it was affordable and then you went next door. And we showed you another one that's going to be market rate, it'd be exactly the same thing. That's, that's good for the inside finishes and also the exterior finishes. You will not be able to tell the difference.
That's really important. Thank you. Um, can we zoom in a little bit um, on the bike paths? I need help. I need you, I need you to point them out. Is it, is it?
Yeah, so let me, can you see my cursor right here moving around? Okay.
Yeah.
So it's these, it's these yellow lines that go through. So every pot of buildings, and this is one of the things that the mayor and, and uh, and other folks and, and Beth, the planner. Uh, were really hot on this. They did not want you entering off where the garages were. They didn't want the garage doors and the front doors to the apartment, to the buildings be in the same place. So we switched them around. So entrances to all the townhouses are on these greenways here that separate these pods and then the parking is in the back. So the, so all these yellow lines are, are walking paths and bike paths. And we put, we put paths that go through the site. So if people just go through this side of the site, they can do that all the way down to twelve. Or if they want to go up the other side of the site, they can do that. Or they could follow sidewalks. All of the streets have sidewalks. And then, like I said, each one of these pods have their own little circulation plans here, here, here. Um, and that's all connected to the bike path, to the larger bike path systems that go through the site. And then over on the other side, it's the same thing. It follows the sidewalks all the way through here and around the front of the buildings. Uh, let's see if I can move. You know, well, that's the border. That's not the bike path. But I mean, I, I don't think they have it in here. Now that I'm looking at it, it doesn't look like they put it, they have it go all the way around the property. And ultimately, when this comes to the planning board, this will be much more detailed. Um, also, let me just, let me just mention, I, I'm a, I'm a transparent guy. And if you don't know that by now, you'll get to know me as our relationship evolves. But we are also in discussions right now with the company that owns this wooded lot right here. They own this parking lot right here and they own this restaurant right here. And we're talking to them about seeing if they can come up with a reasonable price for us to purchase those properties. We've also made a deal with the uh, folks, nice couple that runs this towing garage here and it's their house and the folks that own this house right here. And I'm purchasing these two large blocks right here too, but you don't see them in the site plan right now. We can't fit anything there. We can't fit an apartment building there yet. So if we are successful at tying up these other properties, all of this stuff here and this stuff over here. We are going to come back to the town, to the planning board and uh, ask them to consider amending our uh, our application to include additional. Uh, assets on those pri- properties. Right now, we don't have that done. They're not in writing. It's just in talk. And so what I'm saying right now is I'm telling you, this is what we're intending to do with the existing mall property. So what you see right now, this whole outline where the townhouses are, including this park and this whole outline, which is a really weird shape. Uh, this is all the existing parking lot right here. That's your well right there. Goes around. Um, this parking lot, which I originally thought was part of the property is not. It actually was sold to the guys that, not sold, but there's a deed restriction on this parking lot. That about three quarters of the parking that that sits there is for the feed mill building. So we've talked to the feed mill guys and we said, hey, if we're successful getting all this property right over here, we're going to want to make up your parking. Probably instead of right here, it'll be somewhere in here and that way it's even closer. Um, so I think they'll be happy with that and they'll agree to that type of a swap. And then we'll be able to square off the site. We'll be able to come down here, square this off. We'll then be able to use our, these two big pieces of property that I can't use right now because I can't really get to it or fit anything. Um, plus it'll have these two here. Yeah. So it'll turn into a much, much larger development site ultimately, if we're successful. And if we're not, then it's just what you see right now. Um, and this is what we're moving ahead with. If, if all goes well, this will be the project. This will be very, very comparable to what we uh, proposed to the planning board uh, once we get to that stage. But just want to tell you, full transparency, we are working on assembling more of these properties around here to square off the site. And make it a much more efficient site to lay out. Um, but that's all TBD, be determined. I just didn't want. You know, if I come back in six months and say, hey, guess what? We got a whole bunch of more adjacent properties and we're going to do a much more ambitious proj- project. I don't want everybody saying, whoa, why didn't you tell us that back when you first met us? So I'm just telling you what we're trying to do right now. But it's all like the flood mitigation strategy. It's a good idea, but it hasn't come through. But I'm telling you all about it because I'm telling you everything I know about this property and everything I'm intending to try to accomplish here. So that down the, down the road a bit, um, if, if some of these things start to come true. Everybody says, oh wow, okay. He told us about that a while ago when we first met him and when he first talked about the plan. So no, no surprises, no last minute surprises. I don't believe in that.
Hey George, I have another question. I have a couple of questions. How, how tall are the buildings in feet?
Well, they're four stories. Uh, I'm, I'm going to make a pretty good guesstimate. I'm going to guess that this townhouses are going to probably be around forty. And that the uh, and that the apartment buildings are probably going to be somewheres around forty-six, forty-eight feet. They have a little more requirements for floor to ceiling height to run certain utilities through them. I think height limit in the zone for apartment buildings, if I'm not, if I'm remembering correctly, I think it was fifty feet for the apartment buildings and forty.
Yeah, I think it was fifty and forty or forty-five. I don't remember exactly.
Yeah, Caitlin's nodding her head too. So I think, I think you're right.
Um. If anyone else has anything going, I had one other question and it slipped my mind. I'm trying to see if I can find it. I had it written down at one point.
Just one other point, you might be able to tell from the plan, but it's not entirely clear. Stangle Street, which runs right up here from Route twelve. That's going to stay in exactly the same configuration it's in now. We're, we're, we're keeping that entire right away, just the way it is. Um, but it's hard to read that on the map. I just wanted to mention that.
I have a quick question. Yeah. Um, I know, you know, this, this is still in early phases, but on those four story um, townhomes and then the apartment buildings. What are you um, envisioning for unit sizes, like one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms? Do you have a kind of uh, plan out?
Yeah, we, we, the intuition is the townhouses are going to be three and four bedrooms. Apartments are going to be ones, twos and threes. That's, that's my intuition right now, but that'll be first, all detailed out in the coming months. As we, as we get our designation hopefully tonight and as we get our developer agreement, as we start working on the site plans, all those details will be ironed out. But I'm pretty sure it's what I said it was.
And you have more for, you have a few more slides for us? Is that correct?
No, I don't think I do.
Okay. Yes. No, that's good. Okay. And if, if the mayor's not sure what her comment was.
Yeah, I don't remember. I had it all. I should have written it down again when I was thinking about it.
That was good. I, I really appreciate the, the transparency, the, the um, the multiple presentations that you've provided to the public and tonight. Um. And I, I appreciate, it, there seems like there's a lot of values that you have that, that are shared with the town. Um, this still feels a little scary, but it's, it's a woefully underutilized space. Um, it's, it's less than a shadow of what it used to be in terms of um, a retail space and um, the economics of. The town and the nation and, and the world have just changed. Um, so. I have no doubt that we'll have to continue these conversations and work on these details, but I really appreciate seeing those details about the bike path. And um, those certain aspects that I can see that have been thought through to the end. And yes, they may have to change and we, we may want them to change. Um, but, but I, I really, really appreciate that. Um, but also just want to express that like, we're going to have to keep doing this. We're going to have to keep talking. We're going to have to keep talking to the public because I, I know um, everybody is eager for change, but then what's in your face, it's like, oh, this is what it's going to be. So um, I just wanted to express that and share that and, and thank you.
Well, you're very welcome Caitlin. And uh, and it's really been great working with you. You and, and Mayor Betsy have given a lot of your time to. To help me learn about what the community is really looking for here and to try to make sure certain things that are important are getting put in here. And as you said, we're, we're really, this is really conceptual at this point, but we, we use a conceptual plan to stimulate conversation. I mean, if you didn't put a plan out there for the community to look at and start to chew on, it's like, you know, trying to figure something out in a vacuum. So. So this is our plan that was all about, uh, we believe it's a. Uh, we believe it's a good plan, but we wanted to put it out there, and we wanted to hear from you guys. We wanted to hear from the community. We wanted to hear, you know, is it a good plan? What are the weaknesses? What are the strengths? What could we do better? And I think as we go through the next couple of months now, I, I gotta believe this is probably pretty good in terms of what the final plan's gonna be, because at the first meeting, which was the in-person meeting, I think that was two Wednesdays ago, there was about seventy people there. And based on the questions that happened, I would say I bet sixty-five out of the seventy people were perfectly happy with it and said some very nice things about it, made some suggestions and stuff that were all positive and constructive. And you know, there are four or five people that had some legitimate concerns. One or two of them were just outright nasty as could be and as rude as can be, and I think they were trying to bait me to see if I'd lose my cool and walk over and hit him in the nose, which of course I didn't. I've been doing this forty-one years. There's always a couple of people that just, their whole job in life is to just be angry and try to piss everybody off. Um, and then the second meeting, which was the virtual one last Wednesday, there was more than seventy there. I don't have the final numbers from um from Robin, but I, I think there was more than seventy people on that one. And again, handful of questions that I would consider, you know, kind of tough questions, not tough that I didn't want to answer them, but tough that they were a little like, kind of off the wall-ish. Uh, and the vast majority of the rest of the people seemed like they really liked it. So, so this, I think this is a really good starting point, and I think that as we go ahead forward now into the details of the developer agreement, and then as we actually come in with the site plans, which have a whole lot more detail than this, you know, there'll probably be other issues that'll come up, and you know, we're just working pro. Um, you know, the business of real estate development in my mind, and, and I have this, probably the first you read on my website is, it's community development. I'm not building a project. I'm trying to build a community here that's gonna become part of the greater community, not something that's, you know, some bastard orphan of the community that people look back on and say, oh my God, we really blew it with that one. I want this to be a really positive thing for the whole community.
And I love the park inclusion, and I, I think it's, it'll be interesting to see what that turns into and the specifics there. Um, and, and the, your last statement to me is, is, is huge, um, because i- it's hard for me to envision. I, I think when we talked about um retail, um uncertain areas, um, and, and I appreciate the not wanting to cannibalize what's there and, and that delicate balance of how many people you need per stores and all of those things. But, but wanting to make it feel kind of contiguous and, or continuous or whatever, in terms of with the rest of the town. Um, and I think the bike path speaks to that if you're inviting people through the, through the area, but I also know those details uh do come later and, and are really important, and, and I'm probably gonna be leaning on our professionals and um, you know, as, as we work through those. Um,
That's fine.
I'm gonna stop saying thank you, but. It's, you know, it's, it's a lot. It's a lot, so.
For, for, for Flemington, this is a big project for me, and I've done large projects, but I mean, I know for you guys, this is a really big one. So we ought to make sure we get it right. And the only way we can do that is if we listen to each other and be reasonable.
So George, I remember what my other two questions are. Um, might be three. Transbridge. Do you ever talk to those guys?
I heard that.
Heard a lot. I heard some concerns that what do you gotta do about it? I also know when I drive through that parking lot and I check almost every day, I'll, I'll come through there either on my, so I, I'm, I'm in the enviable position from my day job. I can go home for lunch. My day job is south of the borough, so I'll, I'll go home, sometimes I go up Stangle Road, sometimes I go over to the commuter lot, and I look, I don't see a whole lot of cars there, but have you had any discussions with them?
Yes, um, I actually, Mark Salak, your guy with the county, who's been great, um, introduced me to um, can't remember her last name, Tara, is it Jorkinson? Am I remembering that? She's with the uh, oh geez, let me see. Yeah, yeah, they're like, she's like the nonprofit that's all about mass transit and that stuff. Okay, I can't remember her last name, but I know her first name's Tara. So had a really nice chat with her just today, and uh she and I are meeting, I think it's next week. Uh, anyway, I don't need to say the date. Uh, we're gonna meet, she's gonna get the, the president of Transbridge to come to the meeting and their operations manager and me and her, and um, I probably should invite Mark or ask Tara to invite Mark since he facilitated the whole thing. But anyway, we're gonna talk about it, because uh, you know, if they wanna stay and they're making money and uh I know it would be good for the town eventually. I don't think it's being used that much right now. I was gonna ask you, Betsy, like, rough idea? How many cars you're seeing there? I mean, we're talking like ten, five or ten or ten?
Less, less than ten, less than five most days.
Yeah.
The day of the uh Rockefeller Tree Light, Rockefeller Center tree lighting, there were twelve cars there, so I assume that some folks used it to go into the city to tourist.
Watch the tree lighting, okay.
Zero cars I see over there.
Yeah. You know, it would be great to have it, and if they wanna have it still, even though the usage isn't that high yet, I, I would try to figure out a way so that they could stay. I, I think it's a plus, not only for the town, but I think it's a plus for the site. Do you know how the meeting goes and whether they're willing to hang in there or not? And if they are, we're gonna figure out a, a place to do that.
So speaking of transit, you know that, what if the infrastructure bill, and this is just hypothetical, any reporters should not go home and start writing that there's gonna be Jersey Transit coming to Flemington, because that would not be true. Just a hypothetical. Say that the infrastructure bill and the transit stuff and all this coming down the pike, if it all comes together coming out of Washington, maybe New Jersey Transit will remember that Hunter County exists, because I don't think they understand that Hunter County exists. That's not true. They do know, but considering that there's no Trent, New Jersey Transit buses in this county, nor rail service in this county, I sometimes wonder what their dedication is to this area, but let's just hypothetically say next week, New Jersey Transit calls up and says, hey, mayor, we're gonna start running a train to Flemington. Where do you think we could maybe put that and park those people? Because if, before you came along, that would have been the place we were looking at. And you know, we would have said, well, let's maybe put the parking here, put the station here, and this and that. Maybe there's other places, I don't know, but in my vi- envisioning of the future of Flemington, it would be there.
Well, it's, I'm glad you brought that up, because the second half of my conversation with Tara today was all about that. And I mentioned to her that I met with Kane Baringa, who owns the railroad, really nice guy. He would be very interested in trying to figure out how to get passenger rail service east to the nearest uh New Jersey Transit stop, which I believe he said was in Raritan, I think it was. Um, and if he, and if we could get passenger train to there, they can switch over to a one-seat ride right into Manhattan. Um, and likewise, westbound, I think right now it goes out to, I think, only Lambertville, but if we could get it to go a little bit further to the river, I think that would be a great thing too, for people that wanna come out of New York and go to the river towns. Um, anyway, long story short, I mentioned to her that Kane told me that there was a study done for New Jersey Transit some years ago. He didn't remember the exact year, that studied this exact thing and came up with some cost estimates and some alignment challenges. Um, and then as I'm talking to her, she's going through her file drawer, then she finds the study. It was done in twenty twelve. She's gonna give me a copy when I see her next week. She said a whole lot of homework's been done already. I had spoken to Senator Menendez's staff, his new chief of staff, Jason Tuber, uh after I heard about the infrastructure bills, and I said, hey, Jason, I'm looking at this deal out in Flemington, and it may have a mass transit rail aspect to it. Um, you know, is there gonna be rail money for these kinds of things? He said, well, it's gonna be a lot of rail money for coming out for sure, a lot of mass transit money, particularly rail money. And he said, you know, as soon as you have something, you can send us that sort of tells us, you know, where's it at? What kind of budget does it look like? You know, what's the likelihood that transit would be interested in operating that? Um, Kane said he would operate it if transit didn't want to operate, as long as he could figure out the way to safely get the trains all the way to the, to the, to the New Jersey Transit station, which I think is in Raritan. Um, anyway, so long story short, she's gonna give me a copy of the study. We're gonna talk about what's been done about that, and she's gonna get me a meeting with the New Jersey Transit people to see what their view of the whole thing is. So um, I don't have any answers yet, but I have a lot of questions, and I got, I think I got a path, a pathway to get the answers to the questions. And as all of that evolves, I'll be keeping you guys a hundred percent abreast of it, because we're obviously gonna need, you know, we're gonna need total support by you guys to be able to go forward and, and even apply for the funding, I'm sure, local municipal support. Uh, probably not only in Flemington, but probably all up and down the line. All the other towns are probably gonna have to weigh in on that. But Kane basically said, you know, he's running freight um sporadically, and you know, there's no real, I said, was there like delivery schedules with the freight? Because you know, with, with re- with passenger rail, you gotta have a schedule. You gotta say the train's gonna be there at seven thirty in the morning and five thirty at night, and it's gotta be there. Uh, he said, no, with freight, it's kind of loose. You know, we're gonna deliver like next Thursday sometime. Um, so I think that could be worked out so that he could still, you know, I don't want him to lose his existing book of business, but at the same time, he agrees, and I, I believe that it would be nice to be able to start to establish some limited but regular uh and particularly during commuter hours, a rail service for people that wanna get east. So um, um, I've been, I've been on that idea since the first time I, I looked at the railroad going through the middle of the site, and I saw the train stop. And I know my kids did at least once or twice. We did the Santa Claus thing and the Easter Bunny thing. And um, and he's able, it's interesting, he's able to run passenger rail because of the historic aspect. There's some, there must be some nuance in the, in the Surface Transportation Board's regulations of rail lines that allows him to do that, and I think it's because of the historic aspect of it. He's got like a nonprofit that runs the historic trains and, and they're allowed to do passenger rail because it's historic. Um, because other, you know, back about a hundred years ago, when rail service first started in the eighteen hundreds, there, it, all the rail lines ran, ran both. They ran freight and passengers. And then sometime in the early nineteen hundreds, the uh, somebody came up with the idea that we have to separate it. You can't have freight and passengers on the same tracks. Who the hell knows what they were thinking about? But anyway, that's the current state of the law, but apparently there's this exception for historic trains. I don't know if that's gonna help us or not, but it was just an interesting tidbit I learned recently. I thought I'd share that with you. But uh, Tara and I are gonna get together, and she's gonna pull in whoever, you know, we need to talk to. I'm sure Transit's gonna be one of them. At some point, I'm gonna get Senator Menendez's office involved, because I've been friends with Bob. You know, he's, he was the mayor in the next town over from me in Union City when I was young and starting in Hoboken, and we met when he first ran for the state assembly, and I've known him ever since. So uh, so he's a, you know, first name, I got his cell phone basis, and if I can come up with a plan here that everybody seems to be on board with, he's gonna be our, our champion down there. I mean, I know he believes in mass transit. Um, he believes in, 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 you know, getting our, our, I don't wanna call this an urban area, but this is a developed town. He wants to get our developed towns redeveloped as much as possible and try to prevent, you know, a whole lot of sprawl going out into the farms and forests, which is basically where I come from. I come from a certain urban mindset that says, let's redevelop what we've got, and let's not, you know, necessarily pave over the forests and the farms uh where there's no infrastructure right now. Let's, let's go to places there are infrastructure. Let's rebuild it. Let's upgrade it, and let's, let's let people live in these nice walkable areas, um, which Flemington is probably the most, best, best and most walkable town in all of Hunter County that I'm aware of. I lived there for twenty years. So there'll be more to come, more, more information to come. As I learn more, you guys will, you guys will be kept totally up to speed on it. If we make progress, or if we don't make any progress, if it all just falls flat on its face, and there's just no, the, no way in hell we're gonna get it, well, some point we'll come to that conclusion, and you'll all know that.
Is there any other questions for George Fallow from council members? Okay, George, what I'm gonna do is I'm going to remove you from the meeting and kick you down to be a a participant rather than a panelist.
Okay.
And the reason I wanna do that is I don't want you in here as a host while council considers the vote.
Yeah, no problem. I put your notes all together. I wanted to hear the vote.
Yeah, of course.
Well, you are still staring your sheets, your screen, George.
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how I get you guys to do that.
I fixed it.
You did. Thank you, Betsy. I, I'm not the best Zoom guy in the world, but anyway, thanks.
Okay. And don't wanna make, cancel that. I took you out of co-host. I don't know. Change role to attendee. Okay, now, so what we have in front of us, uh, if we could have a motion, it gives me one second to get back to my screen. If we could have a motion for resolution twenty-two-two dash forty-eight, authorizing the execution of a conditional designation and interim cost agreement with HB, HBC, Hunter, uh Hoboken-Brownstone, Liberty Village LLC, pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law forty A, semicolon, twelve A dash one, and continuing on from there. Um, if we could have a motion?
Long little second.
Excellent. Got it. Andy, can you kind of give council the headline here as to what they're voting on, please? Andy, for those of you who don't know, Andy is our special counsel for redevelopment from the Maricida Falcon Law Firm.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor. The house is a great presentation. I enjoyed it, although I knew some, what you're doing now, it's a thumbnail sketch redevelopment exists because uh there are sometimes problems with the existing zoning, and you need to have some additional incentives for developers and redevelopers to invest money. Uh, and that kind of comes so they can have more incentives, and the municipality can have more ability to work with redevelopers. One of them is contracting with them for the right to uh proceed with redevelopment. Go uh proceed, get site planned and built and negotiate what should be there. Uh, part of the, equal part of that, you, you want redevelopers to invest money, and so they'll make money. That's the intention, because they haven't done it. But also municipality should be put to any cost. And so the redevelopment law allows for um, the municipality to recover costs, so it doesn't put out money to make sure that gets developed. And that's really what this step is. This is a half step for redevelopment, which was kind of uh alluded to during the, during the discussion and the questions too. Um, this um allows the redeveloper to have a, a conditional designation. This one is drafted, it lasts for six months. During that time, we'll be negotiating with the subcommittee and then coming back to the entire council, should we make some progress on a redevelopment agreement that will decide exactly what's gonna be built, the infrastructure, the timing, benefits to the municipality, all those things will go into hopefully the eventual redevelopment agreement. And the redeveloper has the security knowing that it is the, right currently, it has a monopoly for this period of time. It's the only developer that the municipality will be negotiating with, negotiating with during this time period. On the other side, the municipality uh has its costs covered. There's an escrow that's set up. Uh, there's a defined way, these negotiations will be gone, uh gone forward, but the cost for negotiation for planner to look at it, for the engineer, for my time, for any effort that the municipality makes going forward to, to hopefully implement this will be covered. So that's what you have, the interim agreement, which allows both of those things to go forward, us to negotiate. And there was a bunch of questions on refining this, what exactly will be there, how many units will be. That's what's up in the air, and that's what allows the municipality to go forward. The, this document um gives, right now, six months, it could be extended, but it gives uh the parties the ability to do that in a limited set. So that's, that's what uh, that's what this agreement is.
Got it. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Andy? Anybody have any comments?
Really appreciate the overview. Andy, have the process.
Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand? Can you unmute yourself, Jess?
Oh, I think she's frozen.
Okay, there, you're back.
Hi Jess, and we're taking a vote on resolution twenty-two. Hi Jess, and we're taking a vote on resolution twenty twenty-two forty-eight to, the execution of the conditional designation. Um, and Caitlin's voted yes, and it's your turn.
Oh, I'm sorry, but I think my internet, I am abstaining. My internet's not working well.
Okay, you're abstaining, okay. Um, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you, guys. George, we'll be new best friends for a while. As well as the rest of the committee. Andy, thanks for taking time tonight to join us. We appreciate it. We'll be very close touches as we come up with that, with the next steps here.
Always a pleasure, Andy. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you. Next up is author, is resolution twenty twenty-two, dash forty-nine, authorizing the hiring of James Goran as laborer for the public works department.
Till you move. Till you move.
Giles McCormick, a second.
So just the headline here is one of our laborers, most recent, uh, Zach Perez left last year, um, and this is, uh, hiring a replacement for him. Comes in time, just as we're in the middle of winter and there's snowing issues, so. Any questions or comments? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand? Is Jess gone again?
Yeah, I think we lost her.
Uh, okay, Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's approved.
Excellent. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty, authorizing the hiring of Annie Yancy Palmer as office assistant. If we could have a motion?
Till you'll move.
Oh, a second.
So as you may recall, we created the position of office assistant last year. And, uh, we finally have a winning candidate. So, uh, thank you to Sally and Rebecca and everyone else who participated in that interview process. Um, any other questions, comments? Sally, call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long? Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right, that's approved.
Excellent. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-one. This is appointing Robert Clerico as special projects engineer for twenty twenty-two. If we have a motion?
Till you'll move. Till you'll second.
So basically what this is, is, uh, when the planning board approves a project, there is a whole list of conditions that come with the approval, with the resolution. And, um, as I learned recently, um, we didn't have anyone doing those inspections. And I thought the borough engineer was doing them. They were not happening and, um, they need to be done. Uh, I talked with our borough engineer to make sure we weren't moving in on any of his, uh, desires to do work with the borough. He was not, I think he was quite relieved to hear that we were talking about doing that. The reason that Bob Clerico is a great, uh, person to be doing this is he's the planning board engineer. So a lot of these conditions, um, start with him. So he'll be very familiar with what needs to be done. Excellent example here is, um, the sign, the, uh, the living monument sign over there on the circle. Those folks have to have, um, an escrow set up for any damages, say plants. Say they go out of business and now we have a living wall that's dying and we need to figure out how to keep those plants alive or out of transplant, whatever. Um, they advocate their responsibilities, you know, that they agreed to in the planning board process. So that gives us the financial ability to fix that and make sure that that gets done. We didn't have anybody who was making sure that those conditions were getting fulfilled from the, that the planning board put on. Um, wasn't really necessary. I know it seems crazy that it took three and a half years, but, um, through my administration, however, we weren't really getting anything built at that point and finished up to the point that this inspection, uh, that we needed a dedicated person to be doing this. It's a professional position, he's not an employee, it will also be paid for out of escrow by the applicant. So this is at no cost to the borough. There might be some just small administrative fees, but any cost to the borough will be minor. Any other questions or comments on that? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Excellent. Resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two, authorizing the temporary closure of a portion of Spring Street due to public safety concerns. If we could have a motion?
Till you'll move.
Long little second.
So the section of Spring Street where the courthouse square work is going on and it's getting quite active and busy and tractors are moving around. Caitlin, I see you shaking your head. You live nearby there, so you see it every day. Um, it's just, it's, it's really becoming a public safety concern. Sidewalks are closed off. So what we wanted to, you know, so people are walking in the street, we have cars going through there, it's dirty, it's muddy. We've got construction equipment moving around, we've got buildings being demolished. So after I spoke with our police commissioner, Jeremy Long, as well as our code enforcement officer, Jeff Klein, and our public works to make sure there wouldn't be any impact on them. Uh, it was decided that the best option here is to do a temporary closure. Uh, basically it's going to go from just south of the, it's written as, uh, Corrister Place up to Bloomfield, but it really only needs to be closed from, for now, from about the south edge of the, uh, first building that's coming down up to Bloomfield Avenue, just where they're working. It can be extended though down to, uh, Corrister. Of course, the residents that live in that section, I think there's five, there's a couple of multifamily homes. I think it might be five residences that would be affected. They will continue to have access to that area. Police will have access in case there's an emergency and all that as well. They can move stuff out of the way. Um, any other questions or comments on that?
Which resolution was this?
We're on twenty twenty-two dash fifty-two.
Okay, thank you.
Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick? Um, should I abstain, Tara? Since I'm within two hundred feet?
Yes, you have it right.
Please.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
That's approved.
Good. And Kim and Caitlin, if you guys could make sure that Public Works is aware so that they can do whatever they need to close it off and work with the contractors on that to, uh, help out that situation. Next up is resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-three, adopting a COVID-nineteen policy. Is there? Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
So basically the headline on this resolution, uh, it covers sick time for borough employees who may end up, uh, getting diagnosed with COVID. And Tara, I'm gonna ask you to jump in at this point, cause I'm just giving the real high level and then you can get into any other issues. Basically, if, if we have employees who are fully, um, vaccinated, that means with a booster, by the end of February, I think it is, and we can change that date as ne- if necessary, if it's too close. But we figured that should give enough time. Any sick time they may have used, starting at the beginning of November, for a positive COVID diagnosis, a positive COVID test result that causes them to lose work, the borough will cover that sick time. They will not have to use their personal sick or personal leave time when they, when they have a positive COVID test result. Or they're sick with COVID, or they've had an exposure and now they have symptoms. If you are not vaccinated, you will have to use your own time. So this is going to hopefully encourage, it's not a vaccine mandate, I wanna be very clear about this. It is not a vaccine mandate. We just want to encourage people to get vaccinated and see this as a, perhaps a way to help get us there by covering the sick time of any positive COVID results for those who are vaccinated will be covered. Uh, under, and we can, and it can be covered under the American Recovery Fund money. So we did this, as you may recall, from March of twenty twenty to the end of twenty twenty, we also did the same because that was basically executive order coming down that, that had to happen. Um, Tara, do you have anything else you want to add in that?
Um, yes, actually the, we're giving employees, uh, to get fully vaccinated to take advantage of this policy until May first of this year. Because the thought is if you get COVID right now, you have to wait three months to, and you decide, you know what, that was terrible, I wanna be vaccinated. Um, you have to wait three months to get your vaccine. Um, and we did lay out sort of the, um, the rubric for how much time you need to be out, when you need to get tested, when you have a close contact, et cetera. And that follows, that follows the CDC and, um, the state guidelines for how long you have to be out. They have shortened that time period. Um, and additionally covered under this is if you get vaccinated and you become sick because of your vaccine, that time is also covered. So if you're, if you're vaccinated on Tuesday and you feel terrible on Wednesday and can't come to work, that's covered under this time. Um, and, oh, and we did provide if someone is unable to be vaccinated because of a valid medical or religious exemption, they can still take advantage of the policy to, um, utilize, uh, to get reimbursed for their sick and vacation time. And it is capped at, um, ten days per calendar year.
And also if you're not vaccinated and you get sick with COVID, and again, you say the same thing and then you wanna get vaccinated as well, we will retroactively cover the time you are out. If you still do not want to be vaccinated, again, you have to use your own personal leave and sick time.
And it does cover employees, um, that had to use any sick or personal time retroactive to November last year.
November first, yeah, cause that's when it really started, when the thing started to screech back up. Any questions for Tara on this? And this is only borough employees. It's not borough volunteers. Basically, if you get a paycheck from the borough and you get sick time from the borough, you're, this is, this pertains to you. Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
And we may have completely lost her.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All righty, that's approved.
Excellent. Finally, our last resolution tonight, very exciting one, maybe the most exciting one of the day. Twenty twenty dash, twenty twenty-two dash fifty-four, fifty-four, extending congratulations and best wishes to speed skater Kimmy Getz for the twenty twenty-two Olympics. Uh, if we could have a motion?
Giles McCormick, a move.
Johnston, a second.
Got it. And I'd love to read it, but if somebody has it up, they can go ahead and read it since we're in there. Okay, I'll go ahead and read it since I don't see anyone jumping in. Um, resolution twenty twenty-two dash fifty-four, extending congratulations and best wishes to speed skater Kimmy Getz in the twenty twenty-two Olympics. Whereas Kimmy Getz, a native of Flemington Borough, has qualified as a member of the twenty twenty-two U.S. Olympic long track speed skating team. And whereas Ms. Getz has been skating since she was eight years old, riding on her inline skates down New York Avenue. And whereas the Flemington community has supported Ms. Getz's efforts as she has trained to be an Olympian. And whereas Ms. Getz will be traveling to Beijing, China to compete in the twenty-fourth Olympic Winter Games as a long track speed skater. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Flemington extend their congratulations and best wishes to Ms. Getz and her Olympic efforts and Olympic dreams, I would say. Um, any comments?
Uh, just good luck.
That's good to have a hometown Olympic hero. This is great.
Great. And I'm happy to hear that, uh, the FCP is planning on doing some watch parties. I was calling them up, called up Robin a couple of weeks ago and suggested that, and I'm glad to see it's coming together for them to do that so that the community can watch together depending upon when the schedule is for this stuff. I foredo it. Fingers crossed that she wins. And if she does, we'll have a big celebration. Uh, to be announced. Any other comments, questions? Sally, go ahead and call the vote.
Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand?
Yes.
Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
All right. Okay, this is gonna bring us to our second public comment session this evening. If you, uh, would like to make a comment, you can click on the raise hand icon. And if you're on the phone, it's star nine on your telephone keypad. While we're waiting for anyone to raise their hand if they wanna make a comment, um, certain measures, I wanna read this, I should have done it at the top, I did it during our work session, I wanna read it again, uh, has to do with COVID-nineteen and, uh, household water assistance. Certain measures are currently in place providing relief to ratepayers experiencing economic hardship there in the COVID-nineteen pandemic. For more information, please go to our website at www.historicflemington.com or contact Rebecca Newman at rnewman@historicflemington.com, or you can call Borough Hall at nine oh eight seventy-two eighty-eight forty. The New Jersey Department of Community Affairs, DCA, is currently developing a low-income household water assistance program. This program is designed to assist water and sewer customers facing economic hardship due to the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And further information will be provided once the program goes live. Um, are there any comments from the public? I'm seeing no hands go up. So let's go ahead and move on.
Let's see, I have a question on that statement that you read. Does that only get read on council meetings or all public meetings? Like, do I need to read that at the HPC meeting?
That's a question for Rebecca.
Okay, I'll get in touch with her then.
Yeah, get with her on that. And it's on the website and it's been getting mailed out with bills. I just wanna point out that the, uh, moratorium against shut offs does end at the end of January, so that's coming up. With this in mind, I imagine that we, and you know, we'll be looking at this and considering all options before we start looking at shutting off any customers for their water and sewer bills that may have not gotten paid during the COVID-nineteen public health emergency. Um, not like we're gonna be out there on February first, trust me. What's happening? So, uh, do we have an attorney's report?
Um, very short. I apologize. My, my voice is not at its, at its best. I, I do believe I, I currently haven't had the flu last week, so yeah, you can, you can still get the flu even in times of COVID. So everybody get your flu shot too, if you can. Just one thing I had, I just sent out to council, councilwoman Hand and Giles McCormick, the revised bylaws for the community gardens. So we'll have those in place and I think they can look forward to starting that in the spring. I think everything is in place there. And I think that is all, all I have for this meeting. We'll probably have some more, more action items for next meeting, I'm sure.
Okay. Getting back to the agenda. Next up, could we have a motion to audit some bills and? And pay them?
Tilly, I'll move.
Hold on a second.
Okay, um, Ms. Giles McCormick?
Yes.
Ms. Hand? Mr. Johnston?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Ms. Rosetti?
Yes.
Ms. Tilly?
Yes.
Okay, that's approved.
Excellent. Do we have any reason to go into executive session? Could we have a motion to adjourn?
Tilly, I'll move. I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Any extensions? Okay, we are adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
See you in three weeks on February 14th. Happy Valentine's Day. Thank you, everyone.
Have a good night. Stay safe, everybody.